Welcome to the inaugural board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. I'll be chairing the meeting until the election of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board are completed. Please be reminded this meeting is being recorded. We post it later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustee Bambro, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, National Anthem, and Oath of Citizenship?
Please join me in honoring the land and territory. Halton, as we know today, is rich in the history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the lands of the Anishinaabe, to the Ottawa Terre, to the Haudaunacanet and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, our Catholic social teachings call us in solidarity with our Indigenous brothers and sisters to honor and respect the four directions, lands, waters, plants, animals, and ancestors that walk before us. All these wonderful elements of creation exist, gifted to us by our Creator God. We acknowledge and thank the Mississauga of the credit First Nations for being stewards of the traditional territory.
Thank you, Trustee Bambro. There were no motions adopted in camera. The following information was received in camera. Elizabeth McIntyre, appointed as Acting Principal effective November 27th, 2019, with an end date to be determined. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee Antumasi. All in favor? Carried. Are there any declarations of conflict? We'll now proceed with the election of the Chair of the Board for the period of December 3rd, 2019, to the first board meeting in December 2020. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, student trustees will act as scrutineers while Superintendent Lofts and myself tabulate the ballots. According to our Board bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I'll now ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Carabella.
I move to nominate Trustee Antumasi.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Antumasi, do you accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Trustee O'Hearn Zernata.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Peter DeRosa for Chair of the Board.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Murphy. Trustee DeRosa, do you accept the nomination for position of Chair of the Board?
I do.
Are there any more nominations to come forward? I'll ask a second time, any further nominations for Chair of the Board? And a third and final time, are there any nominations to come forward? Seeing none, may I request a mover and a seconder to close nominations for the position of Chair of the Board. Trustee Guzzo, seconded by Trustee Agnew. All in favor to close nominations? Carried. I'd like to now give each nominee for Chair an opportunity if they wish to say a few words. Allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to a vote. Trustee Antumasi, would you care to speak?
No.
Any questions for Trustee Antumasi? Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Antumasi, if you are elected as Chair and you are approached by the press to give a statement, will you uphold the decision of the Board and only the decision of the Board?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Antumasi, could you give us a synopsis or a overview on how you view the role of Chair and what your role and/or major initiatives would be?
The initiatives would be coming from the Board itself. We are nine trustees. As such, I would be the conduit for the nine elected representatives. Thank you.
Trustee Caratow.
Trustee Antumasi, do you plan to make any changes being Chair of the Board as opposed to when Mr. DeRosa was Chair of the Board for the last year?
So what changes are you referring to?
I mean in the administration of being the Chair of the Board, would you make any major departures from what Trustee DeRosa's been doing?
I would simply follow the Act, the Education Act, that is.
Trustee DeRosa, would you like to speak?
I would like to take a few minutes, yes. Thank you. So I've, if you don't mind, I'm going to read the statement. I could probably recite it without reading it, but I want to make sure that the proper message comes across. So, "As trustees of one of the most highly regarded organizations in Ontario's learning community, we have a privilege and a responsibility for upholding its reputation in academic excellence and supporting the development of our students into responsible future members of society. To do so as a new board with eight new trustees out of nine, we have an obligation to learn and to understand the work of our operating staff before we can hope to influence it in a meaningful way. Effective trustee oversight can only come from a collaborative process and a free exchange of information until there is reason to believe otherwise. It is up to us to set that tone. As trustees, we are role models first, not only for our students, but for the community as well. It is incumbent upon us to set the example for our students through concrete action and not just through talk. It is our responsibility to demonstrate that every opportunity that we have to uphold the teachings of Jesus Christ. It is an honor for me to be considered for a second term. I offer you principled and strategic leadership in the place of political expediency. Leadership that seeks to balance the needs of the few with the interest of the greater good. And leadership that is not afraid of unpopular decisions. Leadership that considers the protection of the Board and the interest of the students as its foremost priority. Leadership that develops and sets policy, sees to its implementation, monitors results, and holds the operation accountable. Leadership that exercises rigorous oversight from a position of knowledge and strength without diminishing the staff's value and the experience. Leadership that is committed to fostering a sense of community through better and timely communication. I propose that trustees do the following priorities for the next year, and of course would encourage any other suggestions that you may have. One, review and update the strategic plan of measurable key performance indicators for our Director. Update and align our bylaws to our policies. Implement the Committee of the Whole to facilitate a free exchange of ideas and debate. Establish several oversight committees of the Board to advise all of the other trustees. Primarily finance to facilitate oversight of the line-by-line expense and revenue items as well as capital budget expenditures. Curriculum, program, and academic performance. HR. Students and staff wellness to deal with mental health, bullying, and other similar matters. Establish a secure central database for trustees to gather and track all correspondence of parents, constituents, and to provide a common space for information and ideas. Initiate a comprehensive review of how the Board delivers its French immersion program. Identify and resolve inequities that may exist in the system provided it is financially viable and not at the expense of other groups. I will provide my fellow trustees with access to my calendar in the interest of better transparency, and will commit to periodic update report on current matters. As we all struggled to find our footing this year, we faced a perfect storm that was eight new trustees with a steep learning curve, a new Director, a new government, and the possibility of labor unrest. Unfortunately, too many times we found ourselves trying to gain the upper hand over each other while putting on performances for the gallery. Regardless, we still managed to achieve important things. Yes, we stumbled at times, and yes, there were diverging opinions around the governance and the extent to which the Board should get involved in operations. I urge you tonight to keep the big picture in mind and be mindful of the new leadership we are about to elect. Please resist the temptation of making decisions based on personal agendas. Instead, let's acknowledge these differences and not make them divide us, but rather to be a catalyst that brings us together around a common rallying point, which is the betterment of our students, the constructive oversight of our operations, and most importantly, the preservation of our Catholic education. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Trustee DeRosa. Are there any questions for Trustee DeRosa? Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee DeRosa, as it was put to Trustee Antumasi, I'm going to put the same question to you. What do you see as the role of Chair being?
The role of Chair is to provide balance, provide leadership, and provide diverging opinions from the nine trustees to come together to a consensus, and that is essentially for the betterment of the Board and the delivery of the excellent education.
Any other questions for Trustee DeRosa? Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee DeRosa, if you are elected as Chair and you are approached by the press to give a statement, will you uphold the decision of the Board and only the decision of the Board?
Yes. Any other questions? To a secret ballot, reminder that two trustees have been nominated for the position of Chair. Those are the only trustees that we can vote for. If a different trustee is voted for, the ballot is spoiled. So trustees Antumasi and Trustee DeRosa have been moved and seconded to be put forward as Chair. So thank you to our soon trustees for the help. Trustee Antumasi is declared Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board for the period of December 3rd, 2019, to the first board meeting in December 2020. I now ask for a mover and a seconder that the ballots be destroyed. Trustee O'Hearn Zernata, seconded by Trustee Guzzo. All in favor? Chair Antumasi, do you wish to address the meeting?
Yes, I would. Firstly, to my colleague trustees, thank you for your confidence by allowing me to be your voice. I am humbled and honored for the opportunity to serve as your Chair. It is my pleasure to preside over this inaugural meeting officially marking the beginning of the 2020 School Board Year. Father Coett, thank you for sharing the Holy Eucharist with us. And to His Excellency Bishop Cosby, for his constant reminder of why Catholic education matters. On behalf of all trustees, I wish to extend our collective appreciation to outgoing Chair DeRosa for his leadership in advocating for Catholic education. We have been called to serve and to ensure equity and inclusivity to all students through the four essential elements that contribute to a child's overall success and well-being, namely, physical needs, security, play, and nurturing. As a system and a Catholic community, we all benefit when the beautifully unique brilliance of every child is revealed through encouragement and support. We provide academic excellence through a curriculum which develops Christ-centered children who become enabled to transform society by their acts of charity and social justice through the gift of a publicly funded education system. As your Chair, it is my goal to work diligently and collaboratively with my fellow trustees, Secretary Daly, staff, and stakeholders, and most importantly, the parents who entrust us with our children. I promise to continue the good work of all my predecessors to protect and strengthen Catholic education for almost 37,000 students within Halton. Lastly, I look forward to all for your input so that we may properly direct the Board's collective will with senior staff's support in our policies as we work with a triad partnership of home, school, and parish. Together, we are stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chair Antumasi. Before I pass the gavel, we do have another election to oversee tonight, so we'll now proceed with the election of the Vice Chair of the Board for the period of December 3rd, 2019, to the first board meeting in December 2020. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary, student trustees will act as scrutineers while Superintendent Lofts and myself tabulate the ballots. According to our bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Vice Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I'll now ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate Trustee Duarte as Vice Chair.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Duarte, do you accept the nomination for position of Vice Chair?
I do.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Ask a second time, are there any other nominations for the position of Vice Chair? And a third and final time, nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of Vice Chair of the Board. Trustee O'Hearn Zernata. Trustee DeRosa. All in favor? Motion carries. Would you like to say a few words, Vice Chair Duarte?
Thank you. I'll say a few words and just want to say that as an immigrant to Canada of 18 years, I would like to thank my trustee colleagues for giving me the honor to serve you as your Vice Chair. I commit to you that I will work together with the Chair and faithfully serve the Board and work with all constituents with a focus on transparency and accountability. One of our major goals is to bring to fruition the much-needed new Catholic education center, and to that end, we will work with staff to make this a reality. Furthermore, and of importance, we will continue trustee governance and Robert's Rules training along with scheduling retreats between trustees and staff. Collectively, as a Board, we also wish to explore new programming suggestions to increase academic achievement in math, science, STEM, and arts programs as part of our multi-year strategic plan. With everyone's support, and I mean everyone around the table, we look forward to a very successful year. Thank you, and God bless.
We did close the nomination, but technically, we should also, as a Board, support the nomination. So, all in favor of Trustee Duarte being nominated and accepting the position of Vice Chair of the Board? That looks unanimous to me. Thank you. Motion carries. So congratulations both to our new Chair and our new Vice Chair, and I'm going to ask them to, well, I'm going to hand over the gavel. So maybe we'll take a two-minute break while we rearrange, five-minute break while we rearrange our positions, and then we'll get on with the meeting.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Presentation, item number five, Ms. Thompson.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to introduce Jen, and I'd like to introduce Jen Thompson, our Special Education Consultant for CIA. CIA stands for Special Equipment Amount, and Jen's going to share a lot of information today about CIA and the great value that the CIA funding from the ministry, how it supports our students in our schools with equipment, assistive technology equipment, computers, tablets, as well as other mobility, vision equipment, and supports in our schools. Many of you that have been in our schools will have seen lots of our students in our classrooms with this type of equipment. What you're maybe not aware is that the ministry funds this equipment. It's through the hard work of our CIA department that we get these pieces of equipment in our students' hands in a very, very timely fashion. With Jen tonight, we have our entire CIA department. So I'd like to welcome James McGinnis. James, if you want to just raise your hand. And Jason Maggio from our CIA department as well. And so our CIA department, over the last couple of years, has grown from zero to three. And with that, we've been able to support students and funding that in the past, we may have not fully utilized. Hopefully, Jen, if you have a chance in your presentation, share the most recent CIA funding from last year and how it will support, and even if we have rough amounts, to highlight the number of pieces of equipment and the funds that's being funded for this equipment. And of course, in our audience, you would have recognized also Wendy Reed Purcell, who supports this department. Wendy is our Special Education Coordinator. So, over to you, Jen.
I tried this, it didn't work, so I'm just going to use the keyboard if that's okay. So thank you so much for having us here tonight to give you an update on our CIA department. So just wanted to start out to say, this is our office, the picture that you see up there. We deliver equipment on a very regular basis out to all of the students in our system. And so this is a very common site in our room. We have two of these cabinets, which we're filling on a very regular basis to have equipment picked up and delivered out to our students. So I thought I would just start with just a very quick overview for those of you who aren't familiar with what CIA is and what the purpose of the funding is for. So CIA funding, which stands for Special Equipment Amount, is the amount of money that is given to the boards through the ministry to support students who have special education needs around specific equipment. In the past, that equipment has always been recommended by a professional, so that could be an occupational therapist, a psychoeducational consultant, so somebody who is familiar with the student, does some testing, knows the student, and then recommends that equipment. And that equipment is meant to provide accommodations that are directly required and essential to access the curriculum or a board-determined alternative program and/or course so that they are able to attend school. So that is the purpose of the funding. And it is divided into two components. So as a board, we receive a CIA per pupil amount. This amount is for all of our students' technology needs. So we are given a base amount of $10,000 plus a per pupil amount based on our average daily enrollment. All of this money allows us to purchase items like computers, the peripherals that go along with them, some of our board-wide programs that we use, our assistive technology programs. It allows us to pay for technician costs, repair costs, and all of the things that are required around the use of assistive technology. The second piece of funding that we're given is called claims-based amounts. This amount supports our students with all of their mobility and sensory needs. It also includes our deaf and hard-of-hearing and our blind-low-vision students. So these would be things such as walkers and standers, sensory equipment, FM systems, so all of those things in the schools that our students need to be able to access school and to access curriculum. This amount is given to us differently. We actually, as a board, we pay the first $800 of this, and then the ministry pays anything above and beyond that $800, and we get that money back retroactive. So we pay it out, and then at the end of the year, we submit our report, which is due April 30th is when our CIA year ends, and then once it's approved, we get that deductible back the next year. So that's how the CIA funding portion works. And over the years, as Camilla was explaining to you, we have gone from a department of zero to, three years ago, we began to not only continue to deliver equipment, but we realized that in assistive technology, our students were not receiving any training at all. So they would get their devices, which was wonderful, and those things were being recommended, but they weren't receiving the training on how to use the devices, the types of programs on them. So when we began, the very first year that you see there, so the blue bars, that was our 2016-17 year. So that was the very first year that our CIA department kind of came into existence, and that was me, and I was .5 that year. So we ended up servicing 103 students that year. Now, we didn't begin until February or March, that was when we first began to train our students. We did 412 sessions, which totaled 498 hours of student training on technology. The following year, I was full-time. That was the very first time that we had a 1.0, and Jason joined me that year as well, not in an official capacity as much, but he was a huge help to our system in trying to support us in the IT realm of it. And that year, we increased to 545 students. We did 1,689 sessions, and we did 1,938 hours of training. And that was a huge year for us. And the reason that that year was so big is because we were retroactively looking for students who, over the years, hadn't received equipment and training, and we were almost playing a little bit of catch-up at that time. So there was a lot of students who, we allowed them, if they had gotten the equipment the year before, to retroactively ask for the training, even though their equipment was a year old. We didn't go back two years, we only went back a year at that point in time. And that trend of training and equipment has continued. So last year, we trained 414 students. We did 1,460 sessions, which amounted to 1,776 hours of training. And that was only for the students of that current year, not including the two years' worth of students. So all in all, those numbers are continuing to rise. I don't have our exact numbers for this year, but I have looked at a comparison, and we are actually above where we were last year at this time. So we are continuing to see an increase in the number of students that we are able to support with technology. In total, in Halton Catholic District School Board, as of June 30th last year, we have trained 1,062 students. So that was a really good number for us, we're really, really proud of that, and we've managed to get equipment out to students faster than we've ever been able to do it in the past. On top of training our students, we realized a really important and impactful piece was also to train our teachers. So in the very first year, we only focused on our students. That was how we kind of introduced training. And we focused on students mostly who were in the regular classroom. We grew that last year, sorry, two years ago, and we began to train our teachers who were in structured teaching classes, in our community living classes, and who were teaching our life skills classes. So we had our trainers, which we partnered with LearnStyle Limited. They have been the trainers for us, for both our students and our teachers. And they will go into the classrooms, they meet with the teachers, they find out what their needs are, they help them to integrate technology into their everyday teaching so that they can better support their students. And because of it, their students are becoming better users of technology as well. And this was really meant to include choice around the teacher. So what is it that you need? What are you doing that you need support with? So we really individualized that training. It wasn't just blanket training, here's how to use this particular program. It was what do you wish you could do with technology, and how can we help to support you with that? So we are in our second year of that right now, and this year, we decided to add on two new areas. We are now supporting our essential skills teachers in those classrooms, and our shift has focused in those classrooms from just being the student to supporting the teacher now, because the students have kind of all got the training in those classes for the most part, so now we're looking at the teacher, and how can we support you to support those students who have had that training? We've also this year added on our GLE classes, and we are now supporting them as whole-class training. And we are focusing on our grade nine GLE students, and we are including teacher participation. Again, we are adding or making some choice for the teacher. They can have four sessions or eight sessions, depending on the needs of the students in their classroom and their own familiarity with technology. So some of them are very familiar, and they're opting for four sessions, others need a little bit more support, and they're choosing to take eight sessions. If there are students in the high school who are not in a GLE class, but they get new technology and they require training, we are offering them that training, aside from being a part of GLE. And we've seen it a couple times this year where an English class, a locally-developed English class, has taken the training, so that we can make sure that we're capturing all of the students who move on to high school. And the last thing that we're looking, or that we're working with this year is, we are also supporting our gifted classrooms. So we are working with LearnStyle to provide training not only to our teachers, but to our students in the area of coding and robotics. So this is going to, this is new, we haven't actually begun this training yet. We've had just some initial discovery sessions and information sessions and information gathering with our teachers, and these are our elementary gifted contained classrooms. And we are trying to figure out where teachers are at in their skills and their abilities, where the kids in their classrooms are at, and what are their interests in coding. And we are trying to tailor our training to meet the students and the teachers where they are. So beginning in January, myself and Jason are going to be putting together some teacher training. So we're going to go out and meet the teachers, we're going to bring the robots out, get their hands on those robots, we're going to give them their own little teacher challenges so that they can see what it's like to be a student who is learning coding. So we're going to start that in January. Also in January, but a little bit later, we're going to welcome LearnStyle into those gifted classrooms where they are going to facilitate some robotics training and some coding training as well. And lastly, this year, we've also looked at supporting our blind-low-vision teachers. So we do have two itinerant blind-low-vision teachers in our board, and blind-low-vision equipment changes so rapidly, and the student needs change rapidly as well. So we are offering training to support our itinerant teachers with very specific pieces of technology that support our blind-low-vision students. So we want to make sure that when students are transitioning from one type of technology to a new type, as they grow and as their needs change, our blind-low-vision itinerant teachers are able to keep up with that technology. So they are creating some very specific questions or needs that they feel that they have, we are presenting that, and we are creating custom training for them as well. This year, we took on a very big project. So last year, sorry, two years ago, we built a product called SeeIt. SeeIt really, really revolutionized the way that we do CIA claims. It went from lots of paper being sent through couriers and back through couriers to everything being submitted online. So our entire system is now automated for CIA submissions. It has decreased the amount of time that it takes for students to get their devices by a lot. I know when I was a cert in a school, it sometimes would take eight months to get a device. Now we're turning them over usually in less than a month, as long as we have product on hand, sometimes as quickly as two to three weeks. So SeeIt has been a huge help for us. Not only does it allow us to submit claims, but it also tracks all of our inventory. So it's making us really accountable for what is out there. We can track a specific serial number to a specific student. We can tell how many devices are at each school. We can tell how many students receive training at each school. So it's really given us a way to do a lot of data tracking and be really accountable for the inventory. So this year, in May, we rolled out a brand-new IEP writer. It is the same company that owned our current IEP engine, but we got a letter from them saying, "Your engine is so old, we're not even going to support it as of next year." So we were kind of forced, and it was a good thing, we were forced to kind of move to something a little bit more updated. So we stayed with the same company, and we moved over to their IEP writer. That actually took us a lot of time to get going. What we learned is that we had a lot of discrepancies in our, and it was just human error, people inputting things into Trillium, and we had to clean up all those records. So that took us quite some time to do, but we did get it done, and we were up and running with our new engine in May. In October of this year, we rolled out the second part. So E-Lite is what we are now under. Within E-Lite, we have two modules. We have the IEP writer, which creates all of our IEPs, and then we have meetings management module. And that is the new program that is responsible for our IPRC documentation. So this is, and the two systems talk very nicely to each other, so everything is integrated. But why this is so great is it's also integrated with our student information system. So gone are the days that our certs have to meet with our secretaries or our guidance departments to update by hand all of our Trillium records. Once we hold an IPRC and we either identify a student or change their identification or placement, that information is automatically uploaded to Trillium to ensure record accuracy for us moving forward. Then in November, we were able to integrate the IEP writer with SeeIt. So when certs make a claim for equipment, that system is now talking directly to our IEP writer. The equipment is automatically being put onto the IEP, and we are ensuring that what we have in our inventory for the students is matching what is on the IEP. So all of these have been really big time savers, but they have also made us really accountable for all of the processes that we have around IEP engine and CIA. We have a lot of mobility equipment, and over the summer, our mobility equipment was actually moved. We were in a gymnasium at St. John Oakville, and we've moved into two classrooms. It's been a really good move for us. So when I first started in this role, we had two rooms. So, when I first started in this role, we had two rooms, and they were packed with walkers and bikes, adaptive lifts, and all types of big, big mobility equipment. And we were able to sort and inventory all of that equipment, which hadn't really been done in the past. It was piled on top of each other. So, we've worked to really sort that equipment, get it all organized. We have pictures and tags on every single piece of mobility equipment that we have. And now, this year, for the first time, we've been able to provide the occupational therapists and physiotherapists who work with our students, a direct link to our mobility inventory where they can see a picture and a description of our equipment, and they can write prescriptions directly for the equipment that we already have. So, that way, we're not having to rebuy the equipment, and we are being much more fiscally responsible for the equipment that we already own, which has been a really important thing.
If I can, so if I can just highlight that. As Jen mentioned earlier, and maybe you didn't catch this piece or connected it to the mobility equipment. We are, as a school board, are responsible for the first $800 when we purchase mobility equipment. This is very expensive equipment. It's very complex equipment. And so, what we've been able to do now, this equipment, we can reuse it. It's professionally cleaned, it's fixed if there's anything that's, that's either missing. It's also, we can also update it for the size of a child. If it's not a perfect fit, we can have it, we can have it altered and fixed to meet that child's needs, which really saves us financially so we can reinvest those funds that we'd normally be purchasing new equipment into other special education programs and services in our schools. So, this, this ability to not only clean, update, and now track, it allows our schools to track this equipment. We have this all at St. John's Oakville, which is one of our storage sites. So, just wanted to highlight that. Thanks, Jen.
And he took my cleaning thunder. That's okay. So, for the first time as well, we've hired professional cleaners to come in and clean all of the equipment that we had. In addition to that, we've worked with our provider who is Motion Specialties. They are the provider of all of our mobility equipment for the most part. And we have them come in and work with us to go through our inventory and figure out what is still good, what are OTs and PTs actually going to re-prescribe, and what is no longer valid? What equipment is so old that it can't be retrofitted? With that equipment, as a board, we have been lucky enough to have our facilities department who have been amazing in moving our special education equipment for us, take that equipment and donate it to a nonprofit organization in Niagara called For the Needy, Not the Greedy. So, this is a family organization who takes our equipment, whether it's in working condition or not. They really take the parts and they put it on equipment that they have, or they fix it up, and they have a storefront. And they have families who come in and they will do anything from give it to the families for free if they can't afford it, to a small nominal fee or a donation for students or adults who can't afford to have equipment in their home. And so, they will do that. So, we donate all of our equipment. Stuff that they can't use, they actually take to a scrapyard, they get the money back, and they invest all that money back into the equipment and into their store. So, that's a really great thing for us to be able to do with the excess equipment that we no longer are able to use. This year, the ministry updated their guidelines, and we also updated our HCDSB guidelines. So, with all of the changes that have happened over the last few years, as I'm sure you can imagine, there was a lot of outdated information in the guidelines that we had for our certs. So, we worked as a team to update those guidelines and make sure they were in line with the processes and all of the different things that we have changed over the, over the years. But this year, the ministry came out and said, "We have new guidelines for you and we're going to change one thing that's really going to impact you." And what that was, is it used to be that we would have to have a professional recommendation for CEA AT equipment. But this year, the ministry said, "We're going to, we're no longer requiring that professional recommendation, and students can get AT equipment without that, but boards, you need to come up with some sort of a process to be able to support that." So, that it's not just, you know, "I need it," because they still require it to be essential. So, as a board, how can you determine that the equipment is essential for a student? So, we actually did a really, really good job with this. We met with our chief of psychology, and we came up with a secondary process, and we called it Track B. So, in order to, like, our response to this was, number one, we're going to honor professional recommendations. Because really, those are really important pieces of assessment and recommendations coming from professionals. So, that is our first choice. But there are times where students might be on a psychoeducational waitlist, for example. Well, they might not receive that assessment for eight months. However, we know or we feel inherently in our hearts as teachers who know these students that they require technology. And so, we've created Track B to determine eligibility for them. Our first step is always to implement our tier-one strategies in the school. If that has happened, and the team has talked about this student with their special education consultant, and it has been decided that this student would benefit from technology and the few things that are in place might not be working right now, a cert can conduct what we call a KTEA, which is a Kaufman test of educational achievement with parental permission. Those results are then updated to a very secure portal that we have, and our team can review those results and determine, we can, we can approve or deny their request for equipment. So, based upon the results, we have worked with our chief of psychology to say, if they meet certain criteria on the KTEA, equipment is essential for these students. So, we can do it with our own educational tests instead of having to wait for the psychological assessment. And then, we provide a letter of recommendation from our board back to the cert so that they can go ahead and complete a CEA claim. So, that was our response to that. We've actually had other boards reach out to us to say, "Can you present this to our board?" Because people are looking for ways to, you know, respond to what the ministry has given us, which was a very big task in figuring out how we were going to support students and what steps we were going to take. Some boards have just chosen at this point to say, "No, we're only going to take professional recommendations," because they haven't yet figured out a way that meets their needs as a board to be able to support that. So, there's different things happening throughout the process or throughout the province, but I believe our process is a very, very good one, and we've managed to get a lot of technology out that might not have otherwise gone out. Okay, I want to get, I'm cognizant of time here. So, I just want to show you, and some of you have met Bridgette. Some of you were here last year. So, we are leaders in our community right now in CEA. Myself and Anita Bader, who is another special education consultant, we sit on the ACSET Committee, which is a assistive technology conference that runs in Niagara Falls. James and I attend many different collaboration with other boards. We have a lot of other boards who come to us to present to them. And last year, our team put together what was called our HCDSB CEA Showcase Evening. This was, these were two nights that we ran, and we invited parents, specifically parents of CEA students or who may be embarking on the CEA journey, but really, it was open to anyone in the community. And at that showcase, we were able to have students show the community what they have learned and how they use their equipment. And through LearnStyle, we created a grant where students were able to apply to share their stories and to share their successes. And we were able to choose winners for that, and the students were given cash through grants we received from LearnStyle to purchase technology to support them, not at school, but at home. Because we're already supporting them at school. And so, this allowed them to purchase technology for home that they might not have otherwise been able to, to have. So, this is a picture. We actually went on a road show. Mr. Cipriano went to every single student that we had and presented one of these very large checks to the students. They loved it. And these, the great thing about this was it was students from our life skills class who won this award. We had gifted students who won this award. We had elementary students. We had students from structured teaching. We had students from our regular stream. We had students from all over our board apply and win what we called our Ignite Grant. So, it was a very, very special time and very exciting. So, what I want to just show you really quickly is just a small clip from one of the two evenings that we had. We had over 400 people attend between our two evenings.
Hey, what's up everybody? Welcome to your recent review. It is week 25, and we are here at the Hall City Conference, which we're really excited to make tonight. Tonight is the birth of two events, and it's actually around the Ignite Grant. I'm here with Wendy, who's going to be your friend of mine. Now, what do you tell me, what exactly is this event called?
This is our inaugural CEA technology showcase for students and parents in our board. Also has a spirit for to showcase our students' new technology to support their learning and to be able to do themselves to their students and their board's engagement. And we make it showcase what they're doing to the critical aspects of the technology themselves. So, we've had a more than expected turnout today, almost 200 parents, and we're basically standing.
Wow. So, really, over the course of tonight, they're engaging over 400 parents. This comes mind-blowing. And what's really exciting is tonight, the students that were awarded the grant, they're here, they're showing the parent community what AT looks like in a real-world, meaningful way. Great stuff. Thank you.
So, this, this was an amazing event. It was so well-attended, and the best part of it is it was our kids who ran the event. So, when you showed up, it was booths or tables set up with all of these different students showcasing technology. They ran the night. We did not. That was DJ Cunningham. He is the CEO of LearnStyle Limited. He was our keynote. We did do a keynote speaker that night. So, he was, he is actually a very inspiring gentleman. He grew up with a very severe LD, dyslexia, and really struggled in school. So, he was able to share with all of these parents and students, you know, he's turned out to be an okay guy. So, he really gave hope to a lot of those people that their kids can be successful. And with technology, they can overcome the barriers that they might be facing in school. And so, this truly is why we do what we do. And we meet with these guys on a very regular basis. They provide us with lots of good news stories of things that are happening in our school. Please feel free to follow us on Twitter. We are HCDS, or CEA, HCDSB CEA. And a lot of our schools will post out tweets around what is happening with technology and with our CEA department. So, feel free to follow us, and I thank you again for having me here. Thanks to Brenda, I know you were a piece of inviting us to come out to talk tonight because she had, we had done this for CEA as well. And we are really excited to continue the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Moving on to 5.2, I would now ask Secretary Daly to introduce the next presentation.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Jen and James and Jason and Wendy, you seem to be at every meeting. But thanks very much for, for coming out tonight and sharing that information with us. That's great work. It's my pleasure to introduce Paul Nally, who's Vice Principal at John Vanyer Catholic Secondary School, Aaron Skinnell, who's the Vice Principal at St. John Paul II Elementary School, who are both heavily involved in our 50th Anniversary Committee. And they're going to talk a little bit about a new award that's come out of that committee, the HCDSB Alumni Award. And while this wasn't really the genesis of it, one of the, one of the pillars in our, our STRAP Plan, the Belonging pillar, we do talk, we did talk about the 2016-2021 STRAP Plan, establishing greater relationships with our alumni and eventually establishing an alumni association. So, we thought this would be a good starting point to kind of re-engage some of our alumni and recognize the good works that they're doing, both locally and provincially and internationally. So, I'm going to turn it over to Paul, Aaron, and maybe Andrea.
Hi, everybody. I'm Paul Nally, so I'm a VP in, at John Vanyer. And the genesis of this all came from, because some committee work that I did in my former board. So, I've been in this board for three years. And just being on the 50th Anniversary Committee, they were going around the table, talking about just various and unique ways of reaching out and celebrating what has been done here for 50 years. And just something that I had recollected from my former board, and it was just really something that the whole board was excited about, was honoring the distinguished alumni. Now, the one thing that I didn't really approve of was that they called them distinguished. And normally, when you hear that, you associate the title with some kind of success, whether it be financial or based on being a celebrity. And it was a big deal in my former board, which was different field in case you're, you're wondering. And the whole board community was involved in annually choosing who they deemed distinguished alumni that lived out the Catholic graduate expectations. And so, when the idea came across the table here, I thought, "Why not do it, but a little bit different, maybe a little bit better, where we can celebrate our diversity, where we can celebrate our exceptional students, where we can celebrate students that had a very difficult past, that endured all kinds of hardships and fought through and became resilient, and bring that forward? Those are students, and past or present, that need a voice as well." So, it was just mentioned at the table, and then, based on the fact that as our director alluded to, that it was inadvertently indirectly part of a strategic plan, they all looked at me and said, "Well, there you go, you're the chair." And it was like, "That's fine. I, I don't mind doing it," because things like this, especially with our theological theme here of "Do You Love Me?", is just yet another way that we show everybody in our school communities, whether it be our staff, whether it be our students, or anybody in that realm, how much we love them. So, to celebrate anything that we can in terms of diversity, exceptionality, resiliency, bring that forward, link it to our graduate expectations, and, and move forward with it. So, that's kind of the genesis of it all. And Aaron has been instrumental, as of course Andrea, in bringing this to life. It was just simply an idea that I shared, but it would have never happened without the committee work and Andrea and of course our director supporting it. So, we were just asked here to present it to you because it is something that you'll see is very exciting to the board, and a lot of people will have their hands in choosing these people. And we have 50 years of amazing human beings to choose from. So, I think we'll be off to a booming, flying start, and I'm just, I'm just happy to see it come to fruition. So, that, that's my part, and I thank you for letting me present that.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, we don't have our slides, so.
We don't have the slides, so we're going to try and be as visual as we can with this. Paul's been with the board for three years. I've been with the board since I was about four years old. So, I'm really proud to be part of this committee. We want to talk a little bit about this award. So, we are going to be awarding, recognizing seven individuals each year, starting this year. The timeline, we will start spreading the word through Andrea and the Strategic Communications Department, starting in January. So, we will have it on our website. We will do a media release, and of course, we'll use social media to get the word out to the public, to our board, to our families about this alumni award. We will establish a selection committee with many stakeholders. I think you have the full package, but the stakeholders will include the director, trustees, student trustees, parent representatives. student trustees, parent representatives, school administrators, teacher representatives, support staff, as well as parish community members. So we really want to reach out and have all of those stakeholders represented on the selection committee. All of the applications will be due by March 30th, and I think you all have the package there to reference the nomination package. Those will come in by March 30th. The selection committee will meet, and we will recognize the first seven recipients at our 50th Anniversary Community Picnic on May 3rd. Wondering if you have any questions for us?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 6.1, approval of the minutes. There are no delegations. Can we have a mover to approve the November 19th, 2019 Regular Board Meeting Minutes? Trustee Carabella?
Yes.
Seconder? Mr. Trustee O'Brien? Any changes? Since there are no changes, can I have, can we take a vote? Trustee Murphy? Zaver?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Brian?
In favor.
Trustee Kirk.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn?
In favor.
Trustee Bahamra?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair, Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Chair. Moving on to 6.2, Minutes of the November 26th, 2019 Special Board Meeting. Can I have a mover to approve those minutes?
Trustee Duarte? Seconder? Trustee Agnew?
Any changes, deletions, omissions?
Since there are none, can we take a recorded vote? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Karakow?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Bahamra?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Motion carries. Business arising from the previous 7.1 outstanding items?
Sorry, which was?
There's nothing?
No.
All right. So we move on to action items. Action items, we don't have any. Staff reports, there are no staff reports. Information items, student trustee update. Bahamra?
In terms of our student senate, next week is going to be our last student senate meeting for 2019. It's going to be at Notre Dame, and it's Christmas-themed. In terms of the transit proposal for Burlington students, yesterday, the proposal was sent out amongst the Burlington students from Dilox. Secondly, in collaboration with the Student Trustees Association Catholic Board Council, we have been investigating policies based on plastic water bottle bans, so environmental sustainability, referencing the CBC Stewart's Sustainability Report, and menstrual products in girls' washrooms, almost following what the TCDSB and many other boards have implemented. So the Toronto Catholic District School Board has implemented the water bottle ban, so they just don't sell any water bottles in schools, and so trying to follow that possibly. Thirdly, planning out our leadership conference with tentative dates and possible venues, which we looked into in September. We're hoping to have a leadership conference towards the end of May or June for incoming student senators, just sort of talking about the roles of a student senator, making it more serious, so students understand that the role that they have in the board is important. And lastly, the Mental Health Advisory and Well-Being Committee met yesterday with senators to discuss priorities regarding the implementation of the mental health strategy plans in HCDSB secondary schools. So that's all we have.
Are there any questions? Item number 10.2, Educational Field Trips. Secretary Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. We have three approved field trips, or school educational trips listed. It appears volleyball season is well underway, and I'm happy to answer any questions about those trips.
Are there any questions?
Since there are no questions, and three, are there any notices of motion? Miscellaneous information? Any miscellaneous information?
So the Minutes of September 12th, 2019 Audit Meeting Committee. Can we approve these?
No, it's just for information.
Yeah, information, yes. Minutes of the October 28th, CEA meeting.
Same thing.
Same thing?
Yep.
Is there any correspondence? No correspondence. Open question period. Any questions?
No questions.
Everybody want to? Is that what you're telling me?
Number 14, we're not going to...
Back in camera. There is one absentee person, Shwan.
Yeah.
Can we have a motion to excuse Mr. Shwan? Moved by Trustee Agnew, seconder. Carabella, Trustee Carabella. All in favor?
Admon. Adjournment, closing prayer.
Carabella, Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, the closing prayer has been sent to you by Rosie, if you'd like to participate. So we are in the first week of Advent. Our eyes and our hearts are turned towards Mary as she's carrying our Lord in her womb. She is in her eighth month. We await his birth with her and St. Joseph. Our Redeemer has been alive in her womb since the first instant of Mary's Fiat, Mary's Yes, the moment of his conception at the Annunciation on March 25th. I bring this prayer, the prayer to the Redeemer in the womb, to our board meeting tonight. Please join me if you wish. Name of the Father, and the Son...
The Son and the Holy Spirit.
Amen. Prayer to the Redeemer in the womb. Lord Jesus Christ, you took our human nature upon yourself. You shared our life and death, every part of our childhood and adulthood. You also shared our time in the womb, while still God, while worshiped and adored by the angels, while almighty and filling every part of the universe. You dwelled for nine months in the womb of Mary. You are our Redeemer in the womb, our God who was a preborn child. Lord Jesus, we ask you to bless and protect the children who today are in their mother's womb. Save them from the danger of abortion. Give their mothers the grace to sacrifice themselves in body and soul for their children. Help all people to recognize in the preborn child, a brother, a sister, saved by you, our Redeemer in the womb. During this time of Advent, let us pray for all the preborn children and their mothers in Halton and Ontario and Canada. We close with a Hail Mary, full of grace. The Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for our sinners now for the hour of our death. Amen. Name the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Guzzo, seconded by Trustee O'Hearn. All in favor?
O'Hearn's in.
I'm sorry?
O'Hearn's in.
O'Hearn's are not. My apologies, trustee from the north.[1669.57]